Cindy, whenever you give me the go, we'll get started.
I think we are good to go, Marco.
Okay, we will call meeting to order and I have one clock that says 6:30. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. Now, this is Planning Commission Acting Chair Marco Lizaraga. I would like to make it clear for the record that this meeting, and it should be reflected in the minutes, that this Planning Commission meeting of April 1, 2021, will be conducted pursuant to Governor Newsom's Executive Order N29-20. The meeting will be held via teleconference and Planning Commission members will participate via teleconference. Those locations are not listed on the agenda and are not accessible to the public. The public is encouraged to listen to the Planning Commission meeting live on Woodland TV Channel 20 and also by going to the City of Woodland website at www.cityofwoodland.org/meetings. If you wish to make a comment during general public comment or on a specific agenda item, there are three ways to do that. First, members of the public are invited to leave a voicemail message at 530-661-5900. All voicemail messages received by 6:30 PM today will be played during the Planning Commission meeting as part of the record at the appropriate time. Again, the number is, excuse me, 530-661-5900. Second, any member of the public watching the livestream who wishes to make a comment on an item as it is being heard may submit an email to the following email address prior to public comment on an item: If you email, please include the agenda item on the subject line. Third, participate via Zoom. You will find a link to the Zoom webinar meeting in the Planning Commission agenda that is posted online. Click on the link to join the webinar. The webinar ID is listed on the webpage as well. That ID is 921-7009-5836. Or you may access Zoom via phone by dialing 669-900-6833. And then you put the webinar ID, which is 921-7009-5836. Now, please keep in mind that all comments are limited to no more than three minutes. This includes voicemail messages and email comments submitted to be read into the record. The email shall be read for no more than three minutes. This means that for longer emails, we may not be able to read the full content within three minutes. Or if you have submitted both, a voice message and email, we will only take one. Okay, Commission Secretary, I think we're ready to move into the roll call. And please, each member will re-identify themselves. So Cindy, can you please take the roll call?
I'm happy to do that. So if you're here, please say aye. Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hurst?
Aye.
Chair Lizaraga?
Present.
And Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
And Chairperson Wells has requested an absence due to illness. So we have a quorum, we have five members present.
Okay, let's proceed. One of the things that I'm going to do now is request that each member of the Commission respond to the following questions. Commissioner Harris, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt, can you hear me well?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hurt, or Hurst, I mean.
Yes, I can.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and I can hear myself too, so we're okay. Does each member of the Commissioners have an agenda visible? It is visible on the screen, but please respond individually if you have an agenda. Commissioner Harris, do you have an agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Holt, do you have an agenda?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
No, just the one that's on, online.
Okay. Commission Secretary, have you posted the agenda at a location reasonably accessible to the public?
Yes, we have.
Okay, let's go through the show that we have. How many Commissioners present? One, two, three, five Commissioners. Present for today. In teleconference for the proceedings. Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to ask all the city officials to introduce themselves, please.
Cindy Norris, Principal Planner and Planning Commission Secretary.
Megan Meyer.
Any other staff members?
Megan Meyer, Associate Planner.
Jay Kamara, who's with our IT group and, you know, running at the whole show here for us.
Yes, I would like to acknowledge that Mr. Jay Kamara is with information technology and is managing the Zoom meeting and the public comment portion of the meeting. Okay. As we go through the agenda and the items, I'm going to ask that you please clearly identify yourself. It's time to speak. Okay, I think we're used to that already. I would also need to ask that mute your phones when you're not actively speaking, please. Any votes that we take today are going to be taken on the roll call. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harris, can you do that for us?
I can definitely do that for you, Commissioner.
Please go ahead.
I think the results are best if we don't try to do this together. So I will say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Let me just go down now to ask any member of the Commission, fellow Commissioners, all the staff, if you have any statements. Let's start with Commissioner Harris. Do you have any comments or statements or requests?
I have none.
Commissioner Holt?
I do have a question or a request for Ms. Norris. If maybe at some point, I'm not sure if you're going to give an update, but if we could hear about the downtown hotel, any kind of movement or anything that's been going on on that project, maybe we hold that till the end.
Okay, fine. Commissioner Hurst?
Nope.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, just one. Just for clarification on your part that no dogs or animals were harmed during the taping of this video.
You know, I'm going to have to, you know, ask for your excuse, but I'm not, but I do not do bad things to animals.
Okay, we're good.
I love them dearly. Okay. Staff, do you have any comments at this point in time you might want to make?
I do have a few comments that I'd like to make, thank you. There's a couple of things. I'd like to give an update on a couple of items and then follow on with the long-range calendar. And so regarding a couple of properties, I think that have come up for discussion multiple times. If you haven't already heard some updates, the first one is 210 Lincoln. I just wanted to let you know that staff in the Building Department and Code Enforcement continue to work with the owner and the architect. They do have plans that they've submitted in Plan Check. The building official has given them specific performance dates that they have to comply with and so far they are within, you know, compliance of those dates. They have received comments on their Plan Check and we're waiting to, you know, to have their response. So, you know, the hope is that that project will move forward and it does appear that the owner is, you know, making effort to work on that project. So the second one is Long John Silver's. And I, we may have already made some comments on this one, but I just wanted to let you know that is in escrow and I think it has about a month and a half to go on the escrow. The city does not know who is purchasing this property or what their plans are at this point in time. So we'll keep you appraised as we hear updates on that. And then I did want to just give you an update. If you're not already familiar with this, regarding the railroad cars on East Main, they're just east of East Street. There has been an agreement between the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and the Sierra Northern Railroad to basically, ultimately cut off the rail between Westback and Sacramento. And in fact, Sierra Northern has moved their, you know, their maintenance yard out of Woodlands. And I think that's why, if you've been noticing, there's far fewer cars in that area along East Street. I think they maybe have one or two train cars that are still sitting there. We actually don't have any timing at this point on removal of the rail line that we know of. You know, we obviously would like to see that happen eventually and we'll keep you informed as we learn information about that. So I just wanted to give you those three updates. Next.
Is that it, Cindy?
Well, I can go over the long-range calendar, which is the next item on the agenda, if you'd like.
We are going to move into the next item, so let's just go on and smoothly move into it. So let's go through the long-range calendar.
Mr. Chair, may I ask one question about that last item? Mr. Holt, my apologies, yes, this is Mr. Holt.
I'll identify you.
Cindy, now, in taking out that rail, are they planning on pulling it all the way back out of Woodland past, like County Road 102? Or is it just at that area near Armfield?
No, I don't think we have that information yet, exactly how that's going to, you know, end up. I mean, it would be, you know, great if ultimately, you know, a segment of that trail, or I'm sorry, that train was moved so that we could use that, those properties for other uses, especially in the Armfield area, north of Beam Street there. But we'll keep you appraised as we learn more about it. I think it's going to be a couple of years, it sounds like, before we may actually know exactly what's going to happen.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holt. So Cindy, let's go on and move to item after, the long-range calendar.
On the long-range calendar, we do have identified for April 15th, tentatively scheduled a tentative parcel map for the Rite Aid Distribution Center up on Beamer. And that looks like it's on schedule still. And I'll let you know if it doesn't come forward. What I would like to talk about in a little more depth are some of the feature items that we have listed. The first item is a proposed zoning amendment, ordinance amendment to consider cannabis dispensaries. The city has received a formal application from an entity who would like to open a business and so they are interested in pursuing an ordinance amendment to have the city consider cannabis dispensaries. We're kind of in the earlier stages of pulling that together, doing some research, you know, comparative research with other communities, with what the counties got going with their cannabis ordinance amendments, Yellow County. They're right in the middle of their whole process. And we will be bringing that forward. I just wanted to let you know that that is going to be coming forward because of course we'll be looking at things like, should we allow dispensaries? If we do, how many, where, what locations? You know, those are all kind of key items to be discussed. The next item I wanted to let you know about is the housing element. You know, we are in the process of updating the housing element. We're working with the consultant group, Lisa Weis Consultants. And we have an administrative draft of some of the portions of that housing element. The biggest, I think, from a public standpoint, issue will be identification of the available sites that we have to hold for housing, for both. It'll be for low and very low-income housing, for moderate, as well as for above-moderate housing. We have to show that we have more than enough housing sites available to meet the RENA numbers that we've been assigned from, through the state's process. I anticipate that we may be able to bring that process forward in the next couple of months because this will need to be coming through as part of a public review process. And so that's kind of where we are at this point in time. We also, probably two months ago, held a series of focus groups and focus meetings where we held three different focus groups and they were extremely successful and we received all kinds of wonderful feedback from the individuals who participated in those focus groups. And all of that information will also go to help fuel, you know, information about goals and policies in the housing element. And the last item I wanted to update you on is the comprehensive zoning code update. That process unfortunately got a little bit stalled out as a result of, you know, just COVID, staffing issues. But it is back on process and we're working on an admin draft of that code update. And so as soon as we can, I want you to know, we will be bringing that forward to the Commission, you know, and through a public review process. But it is still moving forward and has implications actually for the housing element because, you know, depending on how many sites we're able to identify, you know, there will be some modifications to the zoning that will likely be proposed. And then just one other thing, we also have, are working on potential annexation projects. We've got a couple of them that may be moving forward. And so you may see some of that coming on your radar also in the next few months. Most of them are kind of in the earlier stage, so that does take a fair amount of time to go through the technical analyses as well as the early sequel analysis for each of those projects. But we'll keep you, I just wanted to sort of give you a little bit of information about what we've been doing. I'd also like to let you know that when we did our annual review for the budget, we looked at, you know, how many applications and entitlements have been coming forward for the city. And we actually, even last year, we had a fair number of projects coming forward. You know, if people were at home and they were wanting to do work. But we have found in this next, in this latest fiscal year that even before the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, that we've already exceeded the number of entitlements and various project applications that we've been processing. So, you know, there's been a lot going on in the city and people are doing a lot of work and, you know, a lot of things are, you know, happening here. So anyway, that does it for my little update.
Well, thank you so much, Cindy. We certainly have a lot of good things coming up ahead, keeping you busy. Let's go right into the next item, subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports? Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I think Cindy handled the cannabis update quite well. What it comes down to is time to take a look at our ordinance that we set into motion a few years back and reevaluate the dispensary, at least the dispensary aspect of it, since we have someone that has applied to have a dispensary here in town. So I really don't know. I have a lot more than that, other than there has been some vetting and all that's been vetted on this company is very positive. The city has done some vetting of them and so has our police chief. So depending upon how we go forward with it, it looks like we have a good option if we decide to have a dispensary in town. And let me think, what was the other? Cindy, did we have, oh, there was the Business and Tech Park. There's been updates, but nothing you haven't read probably in the paper or have material on. Things are progressing and it's quite transparent now. It's been taken to the public, the public's had opportunities to speak about it and get their answers and their concerns taken care of. So that is a huge project, obviously, that means a lot to the city and it's going forward. So those would be my two updates on committees.
Okay, any other committee reports? Commissioner Holt?
No, Commissioner Harris covered everything very well. I would only ask, Cindy, could you remind us, and I've forgotten and I don't have my notebook handy, when do we project the park coming forward, the business park, tech business park coming forward of planning? Isn't that later in the summer, I thought? Is that something we had talked about?
You know, I can find those dates out for you. But yes, that probably, that sounds like an appropriate timeframe for the tech park to be moving forward. I know that Erica's been holding a number of, you know, in the city, they've been holding a number of public meetings. The draft is out for review. I'm sure that once the draft, you know, the timeframe is completed on the draft, they'll have to go back and, you know, look at all the comments that were received and both on the draft document as well as on the environmental document and spend probably several months churning through those and preparing responses and editing the document and then coming back. So you're right, Commissioner Holt, summertime probably is, you know, appropriate for when that document might come forward. I know the goal is to have it adopted before the end of the year.
Okay, that covers our subcommittee reports. So let's move on to communications from the public. This is an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to speak on an item or concerned that is not on the regular agenda. You have three minutes to do that. Staff, is there any member of the public who has submitted an email or left a voicemail?
At some time, I do not see anybody on a Zoom call that has their hand raised. And let me double-check the email and voicemail. Currently, there are none at this time.
Fine, then we will move on to the next item, that's the minutes. We have made available to you the minutes for the meeting of January 7th, 2021, and for November 19th of 2020. Are there any corrections or additions or changes to the minutes by any members of the Commission or the staff? If there is none, then the Chair will entertain a motion for approval and acceptance of the minutes as submitted, Miss Staff.
So forward. Commissioner Harris?
Commissioner Harris, you're making the motion to accept and approve?
Yes.
Minutes, okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by sending aye. And so let me go through each one of you. Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Holt?
Is this, my apologies, is this for the November 19th meeting or the January 7th?
For both.
May I abstain on the 19th and aye the 7th? Sorry, I was absent on the, on the November meeting.
Okay.
My apologies.
Not a problem, so let's go on to Commissioner Hurst.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Okay, well, me too, aye. So motion carries. Accept the minutes. So at this point in time, we're going to go, before we go into the public hearing, let's have the presentation by staff on the next item. Item J.
Good evening, Vice Chair Lizaraga and members of the Planning Commission, Megan Meyer, Associate Planner. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to consider the following requests by Tate &amp; Associates on behalf of the owner, H.E.M. Morefield LLC, for the approval of Woodland Depot Development Project to include a hotel, convenience store, and gas station, requiring SEQA mitigated negative declaration, conditional use permit for two parcels, and their request for a minor design exception. Here you can see the proposal in relation to the surrounding area. The Woodland Depot Development Project is located at 1670 and 1680 East Main Street and consists of two parcels at approximately 4.12 acres in total size. The location is currently vacant and previously served as an auto dealership. The project site is bounded to the north by East Main Street with industrial uses just north of the roadway, to the east by Walmart Commercial Center, and to the west and south by Interstate 5. The development site is zoned regional commercial with a light industrial flex overlay. Here you can see the existing site conditions. As mentioned before, the site previously had the Woodland Motors Auto Sales and buildings on the site and has since been demolished. The site's been vacant for some time and still has the remnants of the previous building foundations along with Hazel Court that served as the private drive into the site. And the bottom photo also shows the interface between the site and the I-5 off-ramp at East Main Street. As part of the pre-application process, staff worked with the consultant Katie Anderson &amp; Associates to perform an initial traffic site evaluation. and Associates to perform an initial traffic site evaluation, identifying any issues with the proposed project's traffic circulation. And from the analysis, the project was conditioned to install a four-phase traffic signal and to restrict 18-wheel truck traffic from the site due to it being inadequate return radius into the site and internal circulation. Through the transportation impact analysis, as well as the VMT impact assessment, the evaluation of traffic operations for queuing on East Main Street, and it was determined it would not substantially decrease service in the area. And the signal timing would provide thorough crew movement on East Street. As illustrated in the images here, the traffic impact assessment determined the daily trips will not reduce LOS from existing conditions at any of the intersection analyzed within, except for East Main Street and 113 northbound ramps. It notated on this image, number two, which will decrease LOS B to LOS C, but only during the peak PM hours. However, much such a decrease is still within compliance with the city's general plan, which stipulates LOS D or better. Staff would like to note that the existing circulation from the previous auto sales uses did include a turn, dedicated turn lane off of East Main Street, which is illustrated in the top photo. The bottom photo illustrates all of the intersections that were analyzed by the traffic impact analysis. And again, the only one that was identified to have a slight increase on level of service was notated here with number two, and that was only during PM peak hours. So turning now to the site plan, the applicant for the Woodland Depot infill project is requesting a conditional use permit to develop an 86-room La Quinta Hotel, a 2,500-square-foot drive-through fast food restaurant, and a tenant is to be determined, and an approximately 4,700-square-foot 7-Eleven convenience store with an associated approximate 4,300-square-foot gas station, as well as 65-foot-tall freeway monument sign. The primary access to the project site will be provided with the new signalized intersection from East Main Street into the privately maintained Hazel Court. The second access to the site will be a driveway along the east property line and will serve traffic as a write-in and write-out access only. The three commercial buildings will have parking that serves its use, but also function as a shared access and parking with 149 parking spaces, including EV, six EV electrical vehicle charging stations and bicycle parking dispersed throughout the project site. Looking now at the proposed structures on-site, a new La Quinta Hotel is proposed to be located on the south portion of the site and will be developed to include 85, 86 rooms across four floors. And it's anticipated that during the peak season, the hotel is projected to employ up to 20 or more employees. The proposed restaurant will be located in the northern section of the site and will initially be developed as a commercial pad to be built out once a commercial tenant has been identified and could employ potentially 10 to 12 people. And staff will work with the end user on final design and details for the drive-through screening and building. It will be viewed through separate design review. The project is conditioned to require the construction of the drive-through restaurant to occur concurrent with or after the construction of the hotel. The final structure includes the approximately 7,400-square-foot convenience store and the 4,300-square-foot gas station. It will be located on the northwest portion of the triangular-shaped lot and will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with eight to 12 employees approximately. Building location on the site serves the gas station's needs to have direct access and line of sight to the gas pumps while achieving the street front, while activating the street front with outdoor seating area. The convenience store will also house two restaurant kiosks within the building. They will include a Laredo Taco Fresh Mex Restaurant and the Raise the Roof Chicken and Biscuits. And fuel deliveries vary, but typically occur outside of the peak traffic flow hours. The gas station consists of a single canopy with eight multi-product dispensers, serving both gas and diesel vehicles. The site was specifically designed to discourage large trucks from accessing the site, but will serve Sprinter vans and other types of boxed vehicles. Additionally, the gas station will also include a site amenities such as an ATM, air and water machine, vehicle charging stations, a landscape seating area, and a dog park, These will, these will serve all of the groups on-site, including the hotel. Moving now to the buildings, here you have the elevations for the 7-Eleven and convenience store portion of the development. And staff worked with the applicant on the design of the building to bring in natural wood and metal materials while presenting a modern take on agrarian architecture with the standing seam metal roof, barn doors, and shed dormers. Here you can see the south elevation and the west elevation that would be directly visible by both I-5 off-ramp and traffic traveling east on Main Street. Here again, you can see the 360-degree design and screening of all mechanical or outside uses. The picnic seating area that is visible in this image will serve to activate the street frontage. The development has also been conditioned to install security lighting at the perimeter of the building, along with security cameras and amplified music to discourage loitering and possible encampments. This is another view of the 7-Eleven and additional views of the development behind it, and this is the view from eastbound lanes from Main Street. And this image shows the 7-Eleven portion of the development from the westbound lanes Moving now to the hotel elevations, the hotel design is one of La Quinta's new prototypes for its hotel branding and is a dynamic mixture of complementary panel types that bring in, again, the wood and stone elements with visual textures. The body of the hotel is articulated to further emphasize the different panel types and is accentuated by a bold sunburst mural on the inset stucco wall directly above the architectural front entry portico. The use of lighting at the top of the cornice will further accentuate the architectural features of the building. And the hotel amenities include a pool, fitness center, meeting room, and business center catering to business travelers. So as part of the project request, the applicant is also proposing a 65-foot-tall freeway-oriented sign located on the west side of the site, notated in red here on this diagram. Proposed freeway monument, a sign would be located along the west project boundary south of the gas canopy and adjacent to the open space, the pet area. The zoning code does allow for freeway-oriented signs in the commercial highway district or regional commercial within 500 feet of the freeway interchange right-of-way to a maximum height of 60 feet. In accordance with the 17.120.50 Section C, an applicant may request exemptions from the sign regulations with Planning Commission review and approval. And as you can see in the images, the Food for Less Center directly across from the project site also has a freeway sign that is approximately 70 feet in height and is offset some by the increased elevation of the I-5 freeway. Here you can see the Food for Less sign and that the freeway does increase in elevation right at this same point. Typically, signs are approved through subsequent design review and staff will work with the applicant on consistency with the community design standards, which do require that signs, main structure, the poles have adequate coverage and architecturally compatible with the proposed Additionally, the project is conditioned to work with the city's Economic Development Department to fill any vacancy on the freeway monument sign slots with woodland-related images or logos if the space remains vacant for more than one month. This image is a preliminary landscape plan, but illustrates that the site will be extensively landscaped with a variety of colorful natives, deciduous, and evergreen trees, shrubs, and drought-tolerant landscaping materials to enhance the overall architectural aesthetics of the location. The proposed project's parking lot circulation and pedestrian access and landscaping are required to adhere to the city's design standards. Site improvements include stamped crosswalk areas, full-frontage improvements of curved sidewalk gutter and landscaping adjacent to East Main Street, a black steel fencing at the property line, overall site landscaping and lighting, as well as park, as parking 50 lot, 50% shading on the parking lot to combat heat island effect. Additionally, the applicant was asked to enhance and emphasize the landscaping interface with the existing Caltrans right-of-way at the northwest corner of the Interstate 5 off-ramp and refresh landscaping in the East Main Street median along the property frontage, Staff will work with the applicant on final landscape plans to enhance the design. The 2030 project plan was updated in May of 2017. The plan includes overarching goals and emphasizes compact development, particularly infill development, and includes several policies relevant to the subject, as shown here. Additionally, the general plan land use map designation of regional commercial with light industrial flex was selected for key areas of the city that were close to major freeway interchanges and would easily be accessible to provide services and draw from a regional area beyond just the city of Woodland. Staff found the project is in line with the goals and policies outlined in the general plan in that it would bring, being designed to have active commercial uses along Main Street, as it is being an infill development that provides uses along with the larger adjacent commercial center and provides a cluster of regional services, and that it has compact form with multiple lane uses on a development area, and that is sensitive to the existing surrounding and designed for site-specific needs. Staff also, regional commercial and light industrial flex overlay zone designation allows for the proposed uses with approval of the conditional use permit as conditioned. Some of the design standards for desired urban form and regional commercial and light industrial flex overlay zone is a high quality of design, which staff worked with the project applicant on the design of the buildings to provide an overall concept for the development that includes natural elements such as the wood and metal textures with a modern design aesthetic. And conceptual landscape will include a variety of water-wise plantings, mixed sizes and colors for an overall year-round look. The site plan configuration has been evaluated to enhance the community character and views from Main Street and the freeway. Also, high-quality materials and sustainability. The project will employ high-quality durable materials. Staff requested EV parking stalls for all commercial uses and for the project to be EV-ready with pre-wired locations for additional EV in the coming years. The applicant has also filled out the staff-required CAP checklist that identifies other energy-efficient areas of the project design, such as lighting and energy-efficient mechanical equipment. Additionally, pedestrian bike circulation. The project site is designed to have shared access throughout the site for both bicycle and pedestrians with new sidewalks, stamped crosswalks, bike parking, shared pathways, and landscape seating and eating areas, and onsite dog park. Additional gateway or entry features and landscape and public art. The design shall include clear sense of arrival with the landscaping and public art program is required for the center. And a number of ideas have been looked at for locations on-site of the art installation in accordance with the Public Art Ordinance. Further, staff has been working with the applicant on the entryway landscaping and robust corner landscaping. Water conservation ordinance, and the project shall comply with the city's water conservation ordinance and any applicable state water conservation. It meets law coverage and parking requirements. And as discussed before, the only element that is being requested by the applicant is the design exception for the 65-foot-tall freeway sign. City staff are working on bringing planning and management to prepare an environmental document as part of the project CEQA analysis. That includes an initial study, mitigated negative declaration, the tiers from the The MN, or mitigated negative declaration, looks at key factors for environmental review, including biological resources, geology and soils, cultural resources, transportation, hazards and hazardous materials, and tribal cultural resources. Looking at just transportation analysis for the project, the project prepared transportation impact analysis as discussed previously and a VMT impact assessment. The environmental analysis also included greenhouse gas emissions, GHD report, an analysis, and a tribal notification to comply with Assembly Bill 52. As part of the project, in accordance with the review protocol required by Yolo Habitat Conservancy, the project site was determined to be urban development. However, there is existing trees around the perimeter on adjacent properties, requiring the project to adhere to the standard avoidance and minimization measures, and has been conditioned to include the requirements for pre-construction survey of potential swings in hawks or other whitetail nests in trees during nesting season. Additionally, the Climate Action Plan, the city of Woodland's 2035 Climate Action Plan, was looked at as part of the project, and the project meets several key elements, including increased use of alternative fuels and fuel-efficient vehicles with the electric charging stations, increase of water conservation, meeting the Amweila Water Efficiency Standards, and complete street programs with the off-site infrastructure improvements to support pedestrian use. The city has reviewed and The city has reviewed and considered the proposed project and has determined that the project will not have a significant effect on the environment with mitigation measures incorporated, with substantial support and evidence provided in the initial study. Staff find the project as conditioned has met all development standards set forth in the city's zoning code. The environmental requirements under SEQA and other policy documents have been met. The project adds portions of sidewalk to Main Street for improved pedestrian access and improving ADA access. The project does not cause direct or indirect potential adverse impacts on adjacent uses. And additionally, it supports existing businesses by creating a commercial cluster of uses. With that, staff recommends that Planning Commission approve the proposed Woodland Depot project as conditioned with associated SEQA mitigated negative declaration. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Additionally, the applicant is represented here tonight and may have may like to speak on behalf of the project.
Okay, let's go first through, um, Commissioner. Let me start with Commissioner Harris. Do you have any questions with staff on the project? Commissioner Harris? Okay, Commissioner Holt.
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harris was muted.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Mr. Harris, do you have any, uh, questions on the project?
I don't think I have any questions. I have a comment that can be made after, uh, after we've gone through this portion.
Fine, okay. Commissioner Holt?
Uh, yes, I have two questions for staff, um, and then a and then a few for the representatives' architect if they would entertain those questions. My first one for staff, um, I noticed in the site access and parking, there's a section there talking about parking specifically for military veterans, uh, which I think is interesting. It's like the first time I've seen that on a project. Is that a requirement by the city or is that, um, an optional or, um, something that they are that the applicant is doing on their own volition?
That is something that the applicant did add onto the project on their own volition.
Okay, great. I, I think that's really, uh, really awesome, really interesting. So, thank you. The second question had to do with the, the signalization of that intersection there, and it's really coming out of, uh, basically people going in and out of that site. There's going to be a lot of cars, and that's why we decided we needed, uh, through the traffic, um, assessment, that we needed a signalization there, correct?
It's also to have better control over the timing of all the signals throughout the, uh, stretch of Main Street that they their traffic engineer can, um, time them so they're through traffic, um, can happen, um, easily, and that it's only triggered, um, you know, the turn is only triggered when there's somebody there to turn.
Yeah, I know the section just e- just west of that area is actually a little precarious to get across if you're, uh, if you're not a bedding, a bedding driver, uh, with a lot of cars coming quite quickly down, uh, East Main. So, thank you for that, uh, with that signalization. That's all the questions I have for staff. I'll, I'll, uh, reserve the rest for, um, the applicant.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Hurst, do you have any questions?
I have questions for the applicant and a comment, but not for staff at this time.
Okay. All right, um, Commissioner Lopez, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay, so, let's, uh, move on to open the public hearing. Uh, the first thing I'll do in, uh, this portion of the public hearing is to invite the applicant to speak. Uh, you've got three minutes, so come forward and, uh, talk to us if you're ready and willing to do that.
Good evening, Commissioner. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. My name is Shandra Mahi. I am the project manager from Tate and Associates, representing this project. With us tonight is Jay Washburn, our Director of Development Services from Tate. We also have our entire design team on to answer any questions you may have. We're here tonight representing HEM, Moorfield, the developers for the project. They have been working on this project at the site for more than three years, and they've dedicated quite a bit of time and and effort into, um, getting to this point. So, they're very pleased to be able to present this project to Commission tonight, and they're looking forward to the opportunity to become a community member in the city of Woodland. So, thank you. We would like to thank staff, planning staff, both Cindy Norris and Megan Meyer, for working with us to get this project to this point. They have been very diligent in, um, working with us on fine-tuning both the site and the architecture involved here, um, site landscape and architecture, to be able to put together a project that, uh, we feel is in, uh, the best interest of the city of Woodland. We've worked very hard. We've gone through many, many iterations, uh, with this project to get here. So, we're proud to present tonight the, um, project that we're presenting to you. We appreciate your time, and, uh, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, um, we will move on to, um, comments from the general public first. Um, do we have anybody, uh, in line for public comments? Staff?
At this time, I do not see anybody raising their hand on a Zoom call.
Voice mail or email?
There are no voice mails or emails.
Okay, then let me move on, uh, to our fellow commissioners. Um, Commissioner Harris, do you have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Harris, are you muted?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I do have a comment. Knowing that, uh, piece of property that bought well, um, and what it's gone through in the last years, it's, it's hard to imagine aesthetically that project's gonna sit where that mess is now. Um, the rendering is, is quite impressive. I, I'm excited for that spot. So, I just, I, at this stage of the game, I, my hat's off to you. I, I think your work is showing, uh, it's a wonderful presentation.
Commissioner Holt?
Uh, yes, thank you, sir. Uh, I have a number of questions, um, Ms. Mahi. Maybe I can address them to you, and then you can redirect if necessary, uh, to anybody else on the team. First, let's start at the, uh, the seven-eleven. Right there on that front facade of that, uh, there is the, uh, the barn door. That's, that's really a fixed barn door, right? Uh, I mean, seven-eleven's open twenty-four-seven. There's no reason to come over and place a security door across that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, the lapped siding that's on that, uh, the tower element of the, uh, seven-eleven, I guess that's on the backside of the seven-eleven, is that lapped siding, is that a wood product or is that maybe a, a comp, uh, cement board product?
I am gonna defer that to Alan, my architect, if he's able to answer that question for
Not sure if Alan, I haven't heard Alan yet.
I'll get back to you on that question. I have the plans, and we can confirm for you.
No worries. And for me, the, the main thing-
Sorry, Alan is, uh, Alan is switching over right now so he can speak a moment.
Okay, no worries. I'll wait.
Alan, you, uh, just need to unmute yourself, and then you can speak. I don't hear him, but he is connected to the meeting.
Yeah, I can see him, and we can circle back. I have a number of other questions if he, uh, comes, comes free. Um, and, and the reason for my question is really, uh, you know, it's a matter of, uh, durability and maintenance. Uh, obviously, a cement board product would have much less maintenance than a true wood lapped siding, and that is a, a west facade. Um, so, just, just, I really was just asking more, uh, for the sake of that maintenance issue. Um, sorry, maybe Alan is, nope, he's, he's been muted and unmuted a couple of times. Hopefully, we'll get him, we'll get him on here. Um, let's move on to, uh, questions on the La, La Quinta, sorry. Um, the, uh, finish is there, um, finish number three, which is, uh, fine sand texture paint, um, is that a standard, uh, seven-eights stucco system or is that, uh, an EPHE system? And I apologize, I know I'm being extremely specific. A lot of this goes toward the, uh, durability and, uh, high-quality nature.
No, we appreciate these questions. That's fine. Um, again, I'm going to ask if our architect, Mahir or Reza, are able to answer those questions for you?
Uh, yes, uh, this is architect me here. Uh, yes, it's an EPHE system.
Okay. Okay. Um, and I note that that does come down around some of the entries and doors. Uh, EPHE can be a little, uh, finicky if not applied correctly. So, I trust you guys will bring in a great contractor to, uh, to apply it correctly.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Um, the next question, uh, has to do with the Neolith, uh, panel system. That is, as far as I can tell, and I've never used it, I am an architect, by the way, that's why I have a rather technical manner of questioning. Um, the Neolith panel is a sintered stone product, so it's a, it's a man-made, um, pressure product. It's basically porcelain tile, for lack of a better term. That's going to come, are you guys going to use the tall, the wider and larger slabs of that product, or will they be the smaller tiles of that product? It's, it's a little difficult to tell from the elevations.
Uh, is the wider and the larger panel?
Okay, great. Um, those are beautiful products, very, very durable, and, uh, I'm quite, uh, pleased to see that as kind of a showcase material on the front of the building. I think it's, uh, it's gonna be just amazing. Um, final question for you guys, that panel, at least according to the elevation, the, uh, rear elevation two on page, uh, sixty-seven of the document, uh, does show it wrapping around the backside of those towers. Is that your intent to go ahead and take it all the way around the towers, given the kind of, uh, uh, four-sided nature of this site in this building?
I, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Neolith panels or?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, they, they, they do wrap around the staircase portions.
Okay.
So, yeah, in, in the front portion and the staircase, uh, the northern staircase portion, yes.
Okay.
It'll wrap around.
Great, I'm very glad to hear that. That's, uh, someplace that sometimes, uh, budgets get in the way and, and they can ax materials. So, I'm really hoping that that makes it all the way through. Uh, it'll be very beautiful. Thank you, that's all the questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holt, to answer your question, the call-out, uh, for the seven-eleven for the rear is, um, called out as metal roofing slash siding.
Uh, it's, it's, uh, let me, let me grab that note. It was note number, uh, three D, and it's called out as traditional lapped siding, which is what made me kind of think that it could be a wood product. Um, but I know that people have been trending away from regular wood because it's just a maintenance nightmare, uh, when it gets hit by the sun so much. Um, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the area that you were asking about.
No worries, no worries.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can hear you perfect.
Oh, thank you very much, and I appreciate your patience. Um, I think it was due to my headphone problem. Um, so, uh, in answer to your question with regard to the, uh, back of the building, that is a hardy board product, cement product, so, um, it should endure that, uh, um, west-facing sun that you were mentioning.
That's good to hear, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, let's go on. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Holt, and thank you, but, um, project managers and owners for answering the questions. Let's go to, uh, Commissioner Hurst. Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question about, um, how you think this hotel and, um, associated gas station, uh, will be, you know, within Woodland's image but also building community within Woodland, um, aiding Woodland in, um, being a better town and not just such a pass-through location as this will encourage. Uh, it seems like, you know, probably a lot of the Woodland residents are not going to be utilizing this location so much as people just passing through are, so I'd love to hear what insight and things that, um, you might see as benefits of this.
I'm sorry, I had a little trouble hearing you. You were asking how the seven-eleven and the hotel would contribute to the city of Woodland, the feel of Woodland, or-
Can you hear me, can you hear me better now? I'm trying to, okay. Contribute to, yeah, contribute to Woodland's community, um, not contribute to the fact that, I mean, this is, this is obviously a bit of a pass-through, uh, site, uh, because it's going to be a hotel. We have a number of those. How is this going to be different? Um, you know, how are you going to be making this, uh, stand out and maybe aid the town more than just a pass-through location?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I can answer that question. Um, I think, uh, the, uh, La Quinta Hotel Group would, would be able to answer it a little bit more, um, with a connection for you. So, um, if they, if they aren't able to, I'm more than happy to, but I'd like them to give them the opportunity first. No, okay. Um, well, um, specifically to the hotel, um, I def- we definitely feel that it will drive traffic to the city of Woodland, which will help, um, economically, for sure. Inherently, a hotel is, um, going to attract people passing through. That's, um, you know, the, the nature of, of a hotel. But it definitely will, um, attract, um, passerbyers through, uh, the community of Woodland, which, which will ultimately benefit, um, the city of Woodland. Uh, in addition, the La Quinta, they want to partner with, um, any jurisdiction, any city that they, um, that they become involved in. Obviously, you can tell that with the addition of the, um, parking stalls for military. That was, um, driven solely by La Quinta. So, um, when they move into a city, um, they definitely want to, um, become contributing members of the city that they're moving into.
Unless the, the La Quinta representatives have anything, if they can connect, that's, that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, Commissioner Lopez.
I'm paying attention, I unmuted my deal, so you can hear me. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think that's a, a good utilization of that area. It looks like the plan is gonna utilize the current street that's there, correct?
Correct.
The current, some of that stuff that's there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I was kind of confused a little bit when they talked about, uh, not allowing, you know, uh, big semi-trucks in there, and I thought, well, how are they gonna fuel the station? So, um, that, that might be an issue for you guys somewhere you have to look at, but other than that, I mean, the aesthetics of the seven-eleven, uh, well, they look pretty nice. I mean, you know, it's, it's looks like a, a well-rounded out, well-thought-of, uh, usage for that space right there. Uh, the dog park's kind of a nice thing, 'cause the people are walking, you know, walk their dog around and say, "Oh, you know what? I'm kind of tired. Let's just go get a room and spend the night." So, yeah, it's got a good little, uh, a good little theme with it. The military parking, uh, that's a plus. Uh, we have service members in our family, so that's, uh, I personally see that as a plus. Uh, you know, I'm just kind of, uh, hoping that they can get this off the ground. That's about it for me. Everything else looks fine. Uh, the materials, uh, Chris Holt- uh, Chris Holt, uh, he's pretty familiar with all that stuff. So, most of us built a few things around town, so, um, we like to see a little better quality stuff, so we know that, and it's, and down the road, that it's still gonna look quality. So, uh, no, everything looks good to me. That's it for me.
Okay, fine. I think that we've gone through all the comments and all the questions. So, I will now close the public hearing. So, the public hearing flows. Now, one of the things that we need to do now, um, is, uh, do you have additional comments, um, Commissioner Harris? Any additional comments?
The only comment I'd have to say is that, um, I, I just wish you the best and like, uh, Commissioner Lopez said, let's, let's keep the ball rolling. Um, I'd to see it happen sooner than later. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Holt, any comments?
Yeah, just a few. I'll keep them very brief. Um, I do appreciate the attention to, to detail, and I'm sure that was, uh, in no short, uh, part, but because of our, our great staff representation and the hard work. Um, I thank the applicant for, uh, sticking with us through a very long, uh, process, development process. I think, uh, the product that you're putting forward is, is good. It's very good. One of the things I'd note, um, uh, maybe for, um, Commissioner, uh, Hurst as well, uh, one of the large parts of, of what the hotels provide to us, uh, as basically the, the closest possible stop to the airport, um, is we do get, um, some, uh, T O D taxes, basically, um, uh, the, uh, the nightly stay taxes. Uh, and then most of the hotels, even the ones down by one oh two, do actually bring, uh, they have shuttles, and they bring a fair number of people downtown, especially, you know, First Friday and things like that. So, um, I, I'm happy to see them a little closer to downtown. I'm also happy to see them utilizing a site that is very challenged, um, to be used. Um, uh, and, and it was sad to see the dealership go, but it really wasn't a good space for the dealership either. Sorry, I appreciate your, uh, your hard work. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any comments, Commissioner Hurst?
No, not at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez, no more comments? Commissioner Lopez, no more comments?
Uh, no, uh, just, uh, I'm gonna just razz, uh, Chris Holt af, after the meeting though about something.
Okay, uh, so what, uh, the chair will now entertain a motion, um, to approve, uh-
I'll make the motion, uh, sir.
You need the motion on the screen?
Yep, uh, no, I've got it here. Um, I, uh, I make the motion, uh, that the Planning Commission received the staff report, uh, conduct that public hearing and approve the Planning Commission Resolution P C twenty-one dash zero one for Woodland Depot Development, uh, Proposal to Include Certification of the Mitigated Negative Declaration, the M N D, uh, and Approval of a Conditional Use Permit, C U P, for an eighty-six-room La Quinta Hotel, a drive-through restaurant to be decided in the future, uh, and a seven-eleven convenience store with a gas station at sixteen seventy through sixteen eighty East Main Street, uh, P L N G twenty dash zero 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 three one.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Lopez, thank you for your second. Commissioner Holt, thank you for the motion. We have motion on the floor, and we have a second. Uh, any discussions on the motion? Since we are not discussing on the motion, uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are we gonna do a roll call, uh, sir?
Yes, that's right. I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Okay, um, Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Commissioner Holt?
Aye.
Commissioner Hurst?
Nay.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
I'm an aye too, so, and the motion carries. Uh, I think that, um, we've, we've done very well, and I'm really glad that we have this project. I'm very satisfied, and, and, and I'm also kind of excited about it. Uh, it's, it's a perfect site for it, and, um, if there are no more comments, I will entertain a motion for adjournment of the meeting.
Make the motion that we adjourn the meeting of, uh, April first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to adjourn has been put in the seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I'll put aye too, okay? Okay, thank you very much, fellow commissioners and staff. Have a good meeting, and good night, and the meeting is adjourned.
This is for Chris, this is for Chris Holt.
What I do.
Do not use the words, "I'll circle back to you on that." That has been linked to a person that is very, uh, unknowledgeable about their job throughout the whole world. So, yeah, don't use that anymore, please.
I, I don't think I, oh, yeah, I did, I did. You're right. We can circle back on that. Anyway, thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, take care, goodbye.
Bye, everybody.
Good job, staff. That was wonderful presentation.
Yeah, you guys did a good job.
Thank you, staff.
I like the hair, Cindy.
Hey, yeah, that's right.
Yes, more than you do. Looks nice.
Yeah.
All right, bye, everybody.
Bye. Good night, Cindy.